All right, I would like to call the budget work session for Frederick County School Board to order. The date is May 13th and the time is 17:34 hours. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion that's been properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries. I will now pass over to Dr. Hummer and his team.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everybody. We have a series of items that we wanted to discuss with you. We have a timeline that we're going to share from when I presented the needs-based budget to you till now. You are going to be asked to approve the budget next Tuesday. We wanted to give you all an opportunity to talk through the budget, see if there's any questions that you all had, or if there's any adjustments, because you all have the authority to do that until it is approved on Tuesday. So, we are going to review the proposed budget. We're going to review what the Board of Supervisors approved. We'll also have a discussion of any adjustments that you all would like to have, and then we'll discuss a little bit about the May 21st meeting. There's no actions coming out of this meeting. Again, it is just a work session. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Cameron and her team, and please feel free to tell her to pause her timeout if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. So, yes, it seems like a long time since we've talked about budget, but that's the process we go through. We get our budget, you get it settled, you approve it, and then we have to do the waiting game to see when the county approves their budget and when the state approves theirs. So now, I feel like it's probably been a month since we've talked about this. So we'll go through everything in your budget as you approved it, and certainly as Dr. Hummer said, you can slow me down if you want to go in more depth about a slide, or if there's something you need more explanation about. So here's the timeline that we've had. We've kind of cut it a little shorter, kind of condensed it a little bit. You'll see the fourth box at the top is today's meeting where we're going through this budget again, May 13th. You'll see this week also, the state is the governor and the General Assembly is supposed to decide and vote on their budget on the 15th. Now, when that happens, we will not get our detailed amount by school division until probably anywhere from two weeks to three weeks after that. Now, because when they approve it, they're approving it as a whole. That information goes to the Department, the Virginia Department of Education, and they break it down by division. And some of those numbers are estimates, and some of those are solid numbers. So, once we know what those are, where it's going, then we'll be sharing that with you as soon as we know that. But then also, as Dr. Hummer said, that on the 21st, then you'll be approving your budget. So there could be a chance we're coming back at the budget again after the 21st, depending on how much state dollars, if there's more in that budget than we originally put into the budget, okay? Sounds like fun, right? So, here's the budget priorities, and I'm not going to read them for you because you've seen them several times, but everything that's in your budget was tied to your budget priorities. So you'll see that throughout in the yellow boxes to show you what's in there and how it ties. So, just as a quick refresher, instructional initiatives, compensation packages, and operational funding. So you'll see those all tied in the yellow box. So here's the salary initiative for all staff. As you remember, teachers are supposed to get an average of 6.6. Our classified are also at 6.6. Our professional scale is at 5, and then all administrators, supervisors, and coordinators are 3.2. So what makes that 3.2 a little important is that's the COLA. So remember, that's the cost of living adjustment. So that's what it just calls to keep current. It doesn't overspend, it's just what, in today's world, what it costs. So you'll see that COLA repeated throughout all the salary scales. Here on the teacher, you see a step movement at a cost of 2.3 million. That is a percentage of 2.3, and to get up to COLA, we had to enhance the scale as well, .9. That cost is a little under a million. So those two numbers equal COLA for the teacher scale. On top of that, if you remember, we have clusters of years on pay levels, more than one, so we're trying to uncluster those. So each of those levels after 15 years have one year number beside that pay level. But that comes at a cost of almost 1.8 million to do that. And that is one of a three-year initiative Dr. Hummer is trying to initiate. So you'll see it come up again next budget year to go for different years to uncluster. And then we want to increase the teacher scale to start at 52, to make it more competitive so we can attract new teachers to the division. So just the teacher scale comes at a cost of 6.8 million. So classified also, the step movement is a little over $700,000. That's a 2.3%, and then to get it up to COLA takes another .9, so the cost of that is 288. Then on top of that, because you wanted to get it to a 6.6 percentage, we had to add 3.4 enhancement as well. So that scale to get 6.6 cost about 2.1 million. Other professionals, we don't have as many people on these scales. So you also see the COLA, the first two boxes up there, roughly a little under 200,000 for both the step and enhancement. And then we wanted to uncluster also for the dietiticians, the psychologists, and the therapists, uncluster them at year 15 as well, and that's another 104. And then the total cost to get that up to 5% is 294. Administrators, coordinators, and supervisors are only getting a COLA, so that's why you see that, just the two lines there, to get it to 3.2, and that comes at a cost a little over half a million dollars. So what else is in here? So we have some other salary initiatives as well. If you remember, we talked about giving a $5,000 bonus to those teachers with 25 years or more to try to help retain them here in Frederick County. That comes at a cost of 1.4 million dollars to put that initiative into place. And you'll see there all the positions that that includes. So that's teachers, librarians, and you can see the rest that are there. Another salary initiative that's here is to do a 2,000 sign-on bonus for some hard-to-fill positions. HR has given, in the green box there, you'll see some of the ones that they have listed that are hard to fill, and you can see the number of days. Those are the ones they're focused on, as well as, on the opposite side, is where the Virginia Department of Education defines some of the hard-to-fill positions. So it could be a combination of those. It could be all of those that they offer that $2,000 sign-on bonus to.
I have a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I know, I'm not supposed to say "I'm sorry", too bad, Dr. Hummer. Braille transcriptionist total. This is out of idle curiosity. Do we actually have any blind students in Frederick County?
None at this time.
Yes, we do.
I thought we didn't.
Visually impaired student today.
Yeah, sorry, visually impaired. Is it one student, two students?
No, I have one.
And we don't have, we've never had a braille transcriptionist? We do have.
Oh, so we must have two positions and one's been vacant. Okay.
Okay, that's, yeah. All right, so we need to fill a second position?
It's been, I don't know that there's a student that we need this position, because it's been open for 597 days. So I would assume that means that we don't have a student that's needed, that needs this braille transcriptionist. Yeah.
And so if we took that position out, what would happen?
Took it out of the budget, or, well, you can repurpose the position.
Yeah, if we, could we, we can repurpose that position?
Mm-hmm. If you choose to do so. But that means if a blind student came onboard next year, we would have to be coming forward to get a new position.
But, oh, is it a one-on-one? Is that the way it works?
I would assume so with this.
It's a one-to-one ratio? I see.
Okay.
If, just a question, if, say, mid-year, we had a student come in, would we, it wouldn't be something we would just, you know, immediately hire for, would we subcontract that out then?
If their IEP called for that, and they had to have one, then yes, we would have to contract out for it, probably to the remainder of the year, and then post the position and see if we can hire.
So I don't think we would be leaving ourselves in any hot water or anything, you know, to repurpose this position, and then, if needed, if another student comes in with those needs, then we could look into hiring on the following year.
I mean, I think that would be...
There's a couple aspects to this. The first aspect is, for these hard-to-fill positions, very similar to what Mr. Atkins is saying, if we have a hard-to-fill position but we have a need, we have to outsource that.
Right.
Right? And when we outsource that, 99% of the time, it's more expensive than if we just would have had an internal hire of that position just based on the level of service that is provided, and it could be very significant. So to Mr. Atkins' point, if we start to say, well, we don't have a student who has a vision impairment and a hearing impairment at this particular time, but we typically do, then we would not advise to repurpose that position and get rid of it. Now, if we went years without a student that had a vision impairment, say, five-plus years, and we had that position before, then yes, it would be in our best interest to move that position around. But that's why we have the staffing standards. What I would ask is that we don't just start moving these positions around and repurposing them, but we have the staffing standards that's based on the number of students and the needs of students. So for any given year, if we, say if we had hypothetically an autism teacher, but next year, we have no students with autism, and we're not foreseeing to have any students with autism, we would repurpose that position somewhere else. And then for the next year, if we had an influx of students with autism, then we would build that into the staffing standard to either move a position around or to add a position into the budget. So there's a lot of moving parts here. So I would just ask that not to pick and choose these positions just based on their vacancies, work that into the staffing standard so we're not just moving positions around randomly.
And I can understand that. My question would be, it'd be like having a heavy equipment operator, right? And then I'd have no heavy equipment on site. What do I do with that, that heavy equipment operator?
Yep.
Do I turn him into an electrician? Well, maybe he doesn't have enough skills, those type of skills to be an electrician. Would, so what would we do if, say, we hired and we filled that position today for the braille transcriptionist, what would their role be if there's no student in need?
Right. So we have two different things at play here. We have an FTE, and we have the actual person, right? So the FTE, I think, is what we were initially talking about in regards to repurposing that, moving that around.
Correct.
The actual person is going to be contingent on exactly that. What are they certified to do? Now, I will tell you, if we had a braille transcriptionist, and we no longer had a student that needed braille, they're getting picked up somewhere else because those positions are very hard to find.
Right.
So that particular individual would not be wise to say, hey, today, I'm just going to be an instructional aide in such and such division. So we, if we don't have the students to actually need a braille transcriptionist, they more than likely will go somewhere else and find another position. So for our HI and VI, those positions are very rare because there are not a lot of students. So typically, naturally, we outsource those, but we need an FTE for that so that we could essentially try to fill that position, so that luckily, if we do find somebody, because we do have some staff that work with our HI, or students that have HI and VI. So it's just, it's contingent on the student, it's contingent on the service. But if we do have a person that wants to stay in Frederick County, we always have vacancies, as you guys know, so we can try to find him another spot, just as long as their certification will allow them to fill that role.
And HI and VI?
Thank you. Hearing impaired, vision impaired.
Thank you.
I apologize. Thank you. We love our acronyms.
I'm sorry. Is this a state-mandated position?
Thank you, DH.
For the braille transcriptionist? That would probably only be if the IEP required it, correct?
Correct.
And I should say, these positions that are unfilled, this was as of January, so it has not been updated. So some positions listed on here could have already been filled from that point to now. This is just to give you an idea of what the HR may decide to pay the $2,000 bonus toward.
I see.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the other thing in our budget is, we do have a hard time getting substitutes. So you all approved the recommendation to increase that by $20, to try to get some subs into our division. So next year, the degree sub would go from 110 that's paid this year up to 130, and our non-degree subs that are currently being paid 95 would go up to 115 per day. Also, we want to increase the perfect attendance bonus for our bus drivers that are paid monthly. So we're asking it to go from 120 per month up to 130 to help keep our bus drivers behind the wheel and driving our kids to school every day.
I have a question on that. So far as the bus drivers are concerned, perfect attendance, that's $10 a month. You also have bus drivers that fill in, do extra runs when there are student trips and in games. They are called to perform additional hours.
Sure.
I would think that $10 really isn't a big incentive, especially for a monthly redeem rate.
Remember, that's 130 per month. It's not 130 divided by 10. It's $130 a month for perfect attendance.
Yes, but that's from 120.
Yes, up to 120, from 120 to 130.
So that's $10.
Oh, you're saying the difference. I see what you're saying, yeah. But now, remember, when they step in and do other runs for us, we also pay them for those extra runs.
Okay, well, I just, something comes to mind that we just had an incident because of how low the salary is for the bus drivers. The age group is rather elderly, and we had one driver have an issue and had to go to the hospital. I was wondering if there would be some way to increase the salary of the bus drivers to try to stimulate younger people to come in?
Sure. Well, the bus driver is scheduled to get a division average of 6.6 next year. So we're hoping that salary increase into that scale will entice younger people to come in, plus having a bonus, a perfect attendance bonus on top of that.
Well, when you say 6.6, when you look at a teacher who's getting $80,000, and you look at a driver who's getting $40,000, that percentage really is negligible.
Sure.
I would hope that, you know, we could boost up the percentage for the lower-scale people.
Sure. Well, the other thing that they're working on in transportation is trying to get more bus drivers being seven hours. So that makes them more full-time, so they work more hours but get a higher salary that's more compatible, like with a seven-hour teacher who works seven hours, whereas our bus driver scale is built on four and a half. So hopefully, the more and more we can get bus drivers' hours up so they're more full-time, like at seven hours, that that will help entice drivers as well, and they don't have to worry about trying to get a job in the middle of the day.
Understood. Another aspect also is the benefit package that the bus drivers are offered. They have to pay for that halfway through their salary. So their salary goes towards paying that.
Like for their health insurance?
Yes, for the health insurance. So that's another detraction from what they're making.
Sure, sure.
We need to entice more people to drive the buses, because without getting the students to the school, the teachers aren't going to be able to do their job.
Right. Agreed.
I was wondering if there could be some reworking on percentiles so far as bus salaries are concerned.
Out of curiosity, because this is something that was brought up on previous boards as well, bus driver pay. And I totally agree with what Frank's saying, you know, it is, it's tough. It is tough. But on the flip side of the coin, they are working less hours than a teacher. So, and, you know, just hard to compare the two different jobs, right? However, it is taking a big chunk of their pay when they're paying for their benefits. I would like to maybe see some numbers to see what we could do and how much it would cost if we took care of at least half of that. Just so we could have a good number to look at and maybe see what we can do, maybe with this budget, or maybe next year, if we've got, if we've got to put that in there somewhere. Because I know it is getting harder and harder to entice younger crowds and bus drivers in general to come out, and our population is getting a little bit long in the tooth. So, yeah, I definitely want to retain what we have and let those new bus drivers coming in learn from the experienced bus drivers that we currently have. Just something to look at, and maybe if we can get that number, just so we have, you know, a ballpark figure.
Sure. So I'll just add a couple of things, just FYI. Not saying we can't do it, perfectly able to do that. We are holding the health insurance premiums the same this year, as well as we have a clinic that doesn't cost anything for our drivers to go if they need to be seen. But also, currently, the school division pays anywhere from 65% to 85% of the cost now for all employees. And when, because there's a range of 65 to 85, depends on which plan you're on and then which level you're on, meaning employee, employee plus spouse or family. So those are just FYIs, but certainly, if you want us to take the bus driver in the middle of the scale and say that they're on the highest plan, what does that look like? We can certainly do that.
Yeah, just that way we'd have just something to wrap our heads around. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just while we're on the topic, can you go back? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
The incentive cost of to increase by $10 is $17,000. So if we increased by $30 to 150, it would be $51,000, correct?
Mm-hmm.
See, I think that would be more of an incentive for drivers, to be honest with you, because, I mean, comparing the drivers to teachers is like apples and anchors, just because of the training that goes involved and the education that's involved, as well as working with students. So anyway, that would be my thought for looking to help retain drivers, is 150 sounds a lot better than 130.
Sure.
And if it's 51,000, I mean, yeah, that's $34,000 more, but I don't know. I think that would be a better use of where we move money to, something we could even do this year.
Well, I'll just add that if you want to do that in this budget, that means something else would have to get cut for that 34.
Oh, no, I understand that.
But if state dollars come in that have, we have the freedom to certainly spend the way we see fit, we can bring that forward at that time and make those recommendations, and you guys can decide.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and to your point, as you were talking, I was sitting here thinking, if we did bump it from 120 to 150, that difference might also offset those benefits and help them pay for that. And I think, in the long run, that's probably the cheaper option, too. Learned a thing or two from you.
I might have thought of that ahead of time. I'm not going to say one way or the other.
I will share that in September, we looked at the monthly perfect attendance bonus, and about 68% of our bus drivers got it.
Wow.
The following month, in October, it dropped down to 58%. So we can look and see if that's ticking back up. I just, I'm saying that just to say that it won't impact everyone, because not everyone gets it at this point in time.
And I can understand that. What happens to the money, if we allocate that money and we're envisioning 100% of our bus drivers have perfect attendance, what happens to the money that doesn't get picked up for perfect attendance?
That's the money you'll see at year-end when we come forward and say, how do you want to spend the year-end money? That's the money that's left over.
Gotcha.
Patty, one more question as well. This $17,000, how many bus drivers overall? Because that's $1,560 a year, should everyone get it, should one bus driver get it month over month? So the $17,000, help refresh my memory, how did you guys come up with that number again?
We looked at the average of how many, yes. We don't say 100% are going to get it. We look at the trend for three years. So I think that percentage may, we may have used around 60% that, when we did it every semester. So I think we bumped it to 65 and did it, because we have about 239 bus drivers now.
Okay, yeah, I'm with the fellas. I would like to see that, if we do get extra state funds, I'd like to see that up, because, yeah, I think that would be very incentivizing for our drivers.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's additional positions that are in the budget, and as you'll see in the first column, those were the FTEs that were requested. And then you see the reallocation, moving some of the FTEs around, so that the net request this year is 25. And this is certainly based on Dr. Hummer, as he talked about the staffing standards earlier. These 25 positions will come at a cost of about 2.1 million. Oh, and I guess I should say, the compliance ones, as he's pointed out before, we have to do. So those seven positions would have to be done in the budget. The night school at Dalja Howard, $46,800, roughly serving 50 students. And then we have the transfer of $1 million from the operating to school nutrition to help support that fund in the raises, the 6.6% raise they're getting. We also have to maintain a three-month fund balance to keep it floating. We also have to cover bad debt that we've talked some about. And then it's also to help maintain the nine CEP schools we currently have this year.
A question back on the trade A question back on the trade school.
The night school?
There was, uh, a conversation about adding or possibility of adding, uh, electricity to the course. Uh, if we had that option, how would we finance that?
Well, um, that's a little different than the hybrid night school. I think that was during just a, a class offering, wasn't it? So there can be class offerings, um, that we would probably bring, have to bring forward like the teacher itself and sign, if we've never offered it before. Um, that's outside of this budget. Um, so I don't know that that's been approved. So I'm kind of wavering here because I'm not.
We offered that course in the past and when the, the, um, instructor, when the instructor left, it was, we just couldn't find another person that was qualified to teach it. And so we moved into something called building trades. It's more like a survey course where they get some level of plumbing, some level of carpentry and some level of electricity.
Okay, so you still have an option of maybe combining also electricity in that realm?
It, so they get taught the, the fundamentals of electricity, whereas the electricity course, that's all it was, was electricity. We just couldn't find an instructor for it. It's tough because those, you know, I mean, let's be honest, they can make way more money in the trades than they can with us.
Yeah, I know an AJ right now, um, for electricians is making fifty-four dollars an hour. And then if they're, uh, foreman, I mean, they're getting over scale. So it, it is tough. It wouldn't hurt to look up in Martinsburg for one of those, uh, electricians that's retiring. I know they have a local up there that's, that pays a lot less than what we've got. Um, but I, you know, to that point, I also just talked to, um, one of the guys from six oh one who's mechanical. And, um, you know, he has done some teaching in the past and he's looking to maybe, uh, crack into, uh, uh, teaching again once he retires. He should be about two years out, but, uh, needless to say, there are some people out there. I know it's difficult to find, especially, you know, people that's worked their whole lives, they don't want to come back and work again. But, yeah, anything we can do to kind of work with, um, some of those local resources like that. If, you know, if we need to go, we have a hall right down here on five twenty-two we can, uh, reach out to. And I think, uh, I think his name's Gary. I think he's worked with us before.
Yeah, we have a good partnership with IBEW.
Mm-hmm.
And they've even been represented on our CTE advisory committee in the past. I'm not sure if they are right now, but I know they have been in the past.
Yeah, and, you know, whatever we can do to maybe get that in. I know right now Frank, we, we just don't have a dedicated, um, course for that. Um, but like Dr. Angelo said, it, it is something that is kind of encompassing to get students involved in the trades and it kind of lets them experience all aspects where they can, um, go out and see, well, maybe I do like the, um, the plumbing side of it or maybe I like, uh, the mechanical side of it or electrical. And then they can gravitate toward that field and, and maybe reach out with an apprenticeship or even summer help. Um, so I look forward to seeing that kind of grow. But yeah, um, hopefully, hopefully we can get some, uh, folks within the community to come out and support that.
So what does the forty-six thousand entail in the program?
Uh, that's for the hybrid night school. That's to pay some teachers to come back at night to help teach, uh, to have a, um, the custodian at night to clean because students will be in the building as well as some, um, a security officer as well. And then transporting some of this, I don't think any of this is transporting students. Is there some a little bit to transport? And then, um, so that's probably mainly the salaries of the teachers to come back and teach.
And this is to help students graduate. That's the purpose of this night school, is so that they graduate from high school.
Right, so one of the, uh, one of the things with this instructional program uh, that they brought up was say that there's a, uh, student who, uh, becomes pregnant throughout the year and/or is working a day job to help support their family. Um, they can come in and still graduate on time by attending this night school.
Yep. Just a little be in your bonnet about this since it was brought up. Um, I was thinking about a, a system that I've been, that I've had experience with where if we worked with, say, and I don't want to get into the weeds on it, but if we worked with Laurel Ridge and paid for the electrician's, uh, tuition, but with the promise that they would teach for us for two years or three years or one year or whatever it is we come up with. I mean, that's a way to guarantee teachers if we get someone to do that program where their education is paid for, they come and they work for us for a year or two. We pay the salary that we have and then they can go off and make their fifty-some dollars an hour. So if that's something that you want to look into.
And, you know, and I hate to belabor the point, but I, you know, one of the other things I was thinking of, and I know this is kind of outside of the budget, but it kind of ties in. Is there any way we could partner up with some of the other local divisions? Maybe Shandover County, Warren County, Clark County, uh, where we're sending kids to Laurel Ridge? And see if we can, each of us, uh, allocate funds toward that program, whether we have mechanical or electrical in their facility. Um, all the kids from the neighboring communities can, uh, take advantage of that and it's not a burden to, uh, anyone counting.
We're currently doing that with an HVAC program, actually. We've been doing that for about five years. And the students go to Laurel Ridge and they go to the Laurel Ridge HVAC program and we partner with Laurel Ridge to make that happen.
Awesome. And how, I'm just curious, how much of the budget comes out for that from us? Just if you had an idea?
I honestly don't have any idea.
Well, from what I understand, it's only two students from each high school.
Yeah, it's not very many kids in the, the transportation because they have constraints, right? As you might imagine, safety issues and things, they can only take so many students.
So in our, for SEPS, we can only send two students?
No, it's, it's a number of students per school.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the exact number. If you know that it's two per, per school, that makes sense. That's probably about right. So that's about six kids.
Okay.
Safety constraints, just the instructional area, the classroom?
Correct.
We have safety constraints as well. Our CTE classes, a lot of our CTE classes, any CTE class with a lab has this, has a cap of twenty students. So they're the same way.
If you want us to look that up and see if we can see what the cost is, we can get that back to you.
I, I'd just like, yeah, I'd like to see what it would cost, um, what we, what our part of the funds would be if we wanted to start something up in partnership with Laurel Ridge and the neighboring communities. You know, that might be something we could look at for next year's budget.
Let's see, I think we talked about that. So safety and security. Um, Dr. Hummer came forward with a hundred thousand, but you all, um, voted to go to up to two hundred thousand for some Truder locks and some cameras. That's still there, as well as, uh, three new buses, replacement buses in the budget at a cost of three hundred ninety thousand. These, these three along with the six that we already have in the budget will give us nine replacement buses for next year and the recurring years after.
And we want thirteen total, is that correct?
That's the number that we have determined to be the best practice number. So we're slowly getting towards that.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
And as we, oh, I'm sorry. No, no.
Uh, so far as the buses are concerned, I know that there is a graveyard of buses over at the bus, um, headquarters. And, uh, it seems that there are various types of buses. Some of the buses are outdated or they're lacking mechanical parts. But if we standardize the bus itself and just continually bought the same manufacturer, I was wondering if that would possibly, uh, make it easier for us to, when a bus is taken offline, to utilize the parts to put from three or four buses, one together and, and use it again. Uh, we can't seem to sell buses that are broken down, but if they're running, we could maybe sell them or reuse them. Uh, I don't know what buses we're buying with these replacement buses, but I think we should try to standardize the types of buses that we're using.
So, so Mr. Cherry, if I, if I may, um, and thank you, Mr. Funes. You brought that up a, a couple of months ago and we looked into that. And essentially, there's a couple of layers to that. The first layer is, is keep in mind that our buses run over two million miles a year. Um, so our buses, they accrue wear, they accrue tear. And when they get to a point where they're no longer being utilized, it's still a taxpayer dollar bus. So we store it in the back. And like you said, we pull parts off of it. We pull different things off of it to continue to utilize so we can keep our current buses continuously moving forward. Um, and those buses have been out there for, for a long time. So we worked with, with transportation. We went out there and we priced out some of those buses. And that's something that we're currently working on that is going to come forward to you all. Because anytime we surplus anything, and this is a policy, that is above five thousand dollars, you all have to approve that. Okay, so this, this is going to be over five thousand dollars. It's not going to be significant. I think we're looking at about eight hundred dollars for scrap metal, roughly around that, that dollar amount. So our buses, they lost, they, they lost. They last a very long time. And we had a breakdown of all the years of service that our buses were in. The buses that you see out there have been there a very, very long time and they've just been sitting there. And agree with you totally that we, we need to move on those buses and utilize those dollars. So, um, it's not going to be significant, but it is going to get some of those monies back. But because it's taxpayer dollars, you all have to approve that to use those, to be able to surplus those items.
To, to Frank's point though, I think he's, and Frank, please tell me if I'm, if I'm misphrasing this, but as far as the brand, like keeping the brand name and the model consistent. So, you know, the hot, in, I'm thinking three replacement buses, three Honda Accords. Okay, we want, we want thirteen total. Can we get thirteen Honda Accords? Like how?
I think a lot of them, a lot of the buses are from the company Bluebird, correct?
That's correct. And it also depends on what our vendors have available when you all decide to fund buses and things like that.
Do we not have, I mean, I know like for the sheriff's department and the jail, they have state contracts with like Ford and things, so they have to get those. Is that similar to what we do here?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And I will say that buses, just like cars, change after so many years as well. So they do upgrade and put different little bells and whistles on buses over time as well.
And, and I can appreciate that, but to Frank's point, you know, I've got a gen, generation three Tacoma, uh, famous Dr. Angelo. And, um, I know while our, our, uh, Gen three Tacomas might, um, have some different parts on them, um, a lot of them are kind of universal. So if this is a Gen three, you know, uh, Bluebird, um, I might be able to take the alternator off that and put it on another bus. Whereas I couldn't do it with, let's say, name another bus manufacturer out there. And, um, you know, so if we're kind of hodgepodgeing it together, it might make it a little bit harder to cannibalize parts off of an older bus, a wrecked bus, uh, where we could do that if they were all, let's say, Bluebirds. Um, I, I don't know if that is a standard policy that we're kind of doing or if that's just something, like you said, to vendors at the time, what they have available. Um, maybe it's time to look at other vendors. I, I don't know, um, how that process would look. Um, but, you know, if we, to Frank's point, if we could, uh, do that, we'd be making most out of the tax dollars and what we've got and, you know, be able to maintain the fleet maybe just a little bit better.
I think, um, we're really going, we're either going to be bringing it through buildings and grounds or finance that surplus that Dr. Hummer's referring to. And I think at that point in time, you'll hear, um, Mr. Pope or Mr. Shepherd talk about how they take parts off a lot of buses that you can't even drive them anywhere.
Right.
So I think, I think you'll get a really good picture of that when we bring that forward, probably sometime in June.
And probably the, the purchase process of the three buses will come through finance or building and grounds too, right?
Yes.
So we'll see that too.
Yes.
Correct. That's correct. And if I, and if I may as well, we have talked with, uh, the folks at the state level for transportation. And of course, when parts come off a bus, we're supposed to replace those with like parts if they're available. That's a safety system and also is a function of, especially with, you know, lights and all those kind of things. So there's a lot of complexities that Logan would probably do a really good job of explaining when he comes in or Mr. Pope as well. So I look forward to that time, but that, that's coming up in just a couple of weeks at best. Thank you all.
So now we're going to switch gears off the operating fund and talk about debt service. Uh, you'll see in FY twenty-five, our debt service needs a, uh, two point three five million more in order to pay it. That would include all the debt for Indian Hollow and James Wood, uh, high school renovation. But you'll see also in FY twenty-six, that debt service starts dropping and will continue to drop through twenty-eight.
Do we have a breakdown of the thirty-two bonds that we have? And then also too, which ones start falling off? I would, I'm curious to see, to see that.
Do you want to see a list of all the bonds that are outstanding and which ones are exp- uh, expiring?
Yes, ma'am. That would be great. Thank you.
Me too.
Okay, we won't leave anyone out. We'll get it for everyone. So here's the capital projects fund. So we're going to switch to a different fund again. The board of supervisors approved three point, um, three million dollars for this fund. We listed the top six things. Doesn't mean all six will get funded. It may mean only the top three get funded. When we go out and do an estimated cost, until we go out to bid for these things, we don't know the exact amount. So we, we're just giving you the top six and then we'll see until the money runs out. We'll just keep spending until we get that, uh, see what all we can squeeze out of that three million.
Just a, uh, clarification question. Stonewall and Apple Pie Ridge need, and Shirando need two boilers?
Mm-hmm.
Yikes. Okay.
Okay.
So where's?
I, I was wondering, are these boilers also standardized? Are we buying them from the same manufacturer? And why is there a difference from Shirando, which is a high school? Uh, and I'm assuming square footage is a lot more than, uh, for Stonewall or Apple Pie. And there's six hundred and fifty and the high school is seven hundred and fifty. But yet we're replacing the same amount of boilers. Uh, square footage is a determining factor so far as heating and cooling is concerned. So I would have thought that the smaller schools would have been less.
I think that's a question for facility services. They give us the estimated cost, so we can certainly talk to Mr. Davis and ask him that question, Mr. Funes.
Quick question about the boilers as well. Uh, so where, let's take Stonewall for instance. It says six fifty, uh, for two boilers. Is that for two boilers or is that, uh, six fifty times two?
Uh, it's the two, two boilers or boilers are at six fifty.
Okay.
It's not double that. It's the six fifty.
Good deal, good deal.
So here we'll take a look at the county funding now that they've approved their budget. Under the operating fund, uh, they are going to transfer five point seven million to help fund what we just talked about. Those are recurring dollars, so they stay in our budget every year. And then let's flip over to the other side of debt service and capital projects funds. They're transferring that from the county capital, uh, fund and those are one-time dollars. So after they're spent in FY twenty-five, then they go away. Okay? And here's the revenue for, um, the operating fund, total revenue. You can see what the adopted budget was in twenty-four, what you approved in twenty-five and then what that proposed change is. Um, the one thing that you'll see of the capital transfer, the county capital transfer of six hundred and sixty-one, that is the six buses that were, uh, used, they used one-time funds last year to fund, but they're wrecked, or the current year we're in, sorry. Next year, they're moving that down to operating so that they are recurring dollars. So then all nine of our buses would be recurring dollars in the operating fund, which is a good thing for us. Here, we're just putting a slide for you to see the, um, what all of our funds will be that you'll be looking at, uh, on the twenty-first. You'll see, you'll have a resolution that you'll approve, uh, up until where the arrow is pointing. And that's just because the other, the last three, construction, health insurance and special grants funds are done differently. The balance at June thirty rolls over automatically into the new year. So therefore, a resolution is not needed. Um, so this is what you'll be seeing on the twenty-first in approving for all funds. So your board meeting, you'll have that resolution we just talked about to read and approve or adjust however way you see fit. Uh, the superintendent will provide a presentation to you on the twenty-first with your recommendations of anything you want changed today and his own, if, if we know anything more about from the state. And then you'll be asked on the twenty-first to approve that budget. Uh, we need your approval so that we can move forward with salary scales and contracts for all of our staff. And on the state budget update, again, is they're expected to pass it on the fifteenth. Uh, we will have some information on the twenty-first. It may not be everything, but maybe something. Hopefully it would be everything, so we can just keep moving. Uh, and then we'll discuss at that point in time any overages that we receive from the state and how you would like to spend those dollars. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, Mrs. Camery. Great job. Um, so a couple of things I wanted to add. There was a, a bunch of questions that you all had asked. I want to open it back up again for any other questions. We'll get these responses to you. Um, the biggest piece that we need to know is what are the proposed changes or adjustments that you all would like to see? The only one that I heard was in regards to the bus drivers, um, the hundred and fifty dollars, changing it to the perfect attendance from one twenty to one fifty. So that's going up an additional twenty dollars. So we'll work out that total. Uh, and then- So, we'll work out that total, and then we can discuss if we get additional state dollars or if there's any sort of adjustments that you all would like to see there. There were some other items that we definitely want to take a look at in regards to future budgets, as well as as we're purchasing items such as the buses, also taking a look at the boilers, making sure we're doing that, we'll get that response to you as well. So, I just want to make sure that I'm answering all of your questions, but for budget purposes, for adjustments that you would like for me to present to you all at the next meeting, I want to make sure that we capture all of those and that we can put those dollar amounts together for you so that we can take that into consideration on Tuesday.
I do have one question. It's my understanding, we had, the operating budget that we received from the county is about $320,000 less than what we asked for.
Yes.
So, where has that been accounted for in these numbers? Or has it, are we just doing without?
Well, in reality, remember, the state budget also dropped the million as well, so that came into play. And then there's some extra state money on the 3% that we put in because we knew the state was coming in at 3%. So, the budget is also reflected of a some increase of the state as well.
Okay, so that's state increase plus the 1 million that came in?
That came out.
That came out.
Roughly, that's really where it is.
Got it, okay. So, we were able to recapture all of that even without having the official state budget yet?
Right, because the state is very, they already confirmed the 3% is in.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Great question.
So, does that mean we have an overage already?
Yeah.
And if so, how much and where can those dollars be used?
Okay, and this is really a process, and so, let me explain it this way. If there's some overage in the budget, we would not bring that forward until the state lands in case they cut something. So, you would want to see it as one package, right? So, this, you approve this, this is what we're moving forward with. If there's overages in that, we're going to hear what the state has to say and get our numbers, and then we're going to come to you one last time to say, here's your overage of everything, what do you want to do with it?
And that'll be on the 21st?
Only if the state gives us our numbers by then. And we have to wait, the state has to send it to VDOE, who then gives us the count tool who helps us determine how much money we're getting.
When's that deadline?
The 15th is when they're supposed to land. But then, the time to get it to VDOE and get it to us could be anywhere from two to three weeks.
Okay.
Unless they're really on it this year, which would be great, and then we can come back and just really nail it on the 21st, would be great.
So, if they don't have that by the 21st, which that's sounding very optimistic if they do, if we do have those final numbers, we will not, we will hold this vote until we get those numbers, correct?
No, no. So, yeah, let me, let me break it down a little bit more. So, with our operating budget, what we initially had proposed was 7.9 from the needs-based budget. I'll break it down from January. We had conversations in regards to the CEP, as well as adding on the additional bus, adding on the 100,000 for the safety and security, so that 7.9 went to 7 million. And that was all at the time that we thought we were only going to get a 1% bonus for all staff from the state, and they were still working through what that was going to look like. The piece that a lot of school divisions have to work through, which is, it makes our lives a lot of fun, and I'm sure Patty can contest to this, is that we receive about five to six renditions of what we potentially will receive from the state. And those renditions are finalized when the final budget is approved. And to answer your question, essentially, July 1 is that deadline, because that's when that next fiscal year starts for the state. So, we get these renditions of what we think the budget is going to be. So, not only is it complicated for school boards, but it's also complicated for localities because they take the number of what they think that state dollar is going to be. So, that's what they base that on. So, we asked for seven, the county then came back and said, we'll give you five, we'll also give you three for CAP, excuse me, and then 2.3 for debt service. They then came back and said, we're now going to cut you an additional $300,000, so they approved that money. But with the shift of the bus dollars over to the operating, so they moved those dollars over, so that helped, as well as cutting the 1%, because that's no longer on there. And as Mrs. Camery mentioned, we are anticipating we're going to get that 3%, okay? So, with all that being said, where this budget is going to land, we will get the dollars we need to operate at that number that we initially proposed.
Now, that 3%, 3% of what, which equals what dollar amount?
Say that one more time?
You're asking how much, what equates the 3% to dollar-wise? Do you have the number in front of you? It's probably going to be somewhere around two, two and a half million, something, two and a half, three?
And that 3% is 3% of what? Sorry, you guys have probably already said it, but 3% of what amount of money equals that 2-point-ish?
3% increase of everybody's salary.
3% increase of everyone's, okay. So, that's salary increase, which is baked into the total number of the operating budget, I got that.
And let me break this down a little bit more, because that's a great question. We initially said 6.6 average increase. That doesn't mean it's 6.6 now plus 3.
Right.
That does not what that means, that means now that 3. Instead of us asking the locality, we're getting dollars from the state to offset those dollars.
Got it.
Okay? So, when you all approve the budget, hopefully, on May 21st, and if there's any overage, we don't automatically just absorb those dollars, we would then talk about how to spend those overage of dollars. Because, and also too, based on sometimes when we receive these dollars, there's certain stipulations that the state will say, you have to spend it on A, B, or C. Remember, we were talking about the at-risk dollars. So, if they give us additional at-risk dollars, we have to spend those dollars on at-risk, and if we don't, we don't get those dollars. So, we would have to talk about where those dollars would go. So, it's not that we have to wait to vote and then determine where to move that money. We have what we need in the operating budget based on what we're projected to get from the state and as well as what the county appropriated.
Got it, okay. Another vocabulary word for me, the at-risk. Do you guys mind sending me a list of all the at-risk things that could potentially be?
Yeah, no, no, we already have those, yeah, because we had that in a presentation, we'll reshare that with you.
Great, thank you.
So, here's a question. If the state, so we, say, we do get an overage, right? And we're already, you know, fine with our operating budget, but we have, we have X amount of dollars. The state says, you have to spend X amount of dollars on nutrition, all right? Well, we're already meeting our standard there, can we move money to offset if, say, we don't get funded for the fourth high school to what we're asking? Can we send that money over to the CAP to offset anything that we don't get from the locality?
So, CAP, if I'm understanding you correctly, CAP is a construction fund that we would have to ask to move dollars into that fund. So, that's when we initially spoke about anticipating an overage of dollars, we were talking about adding it to the CAP because we asked for 19 million and we're only getting 3 million of that. So, that was that first thing that we were talking about. For CAP, that's a completely different process, and it would have to go into the capital dollars of the county. We can't save up 152 million dollars as a student, right? So, if we were to, say, get an additional 2 million dollars, we can't take that money and say, all right, we're going to save it over here for the fourth high school, it doesn't work that way. The county would essentially have to take those dollars and save it in their capital dollars and then apply it towards whatever CAP project we had, because that, those are our high-end projects. Those are going to be our million-dollar, 10-million-dollar, what-have-you projects. So, I'm not familiar of moving that money over, Patty, unless you can, are familiar with the process that way. I mean, I understand your question.
Right.
But I'm not familiar of us being able to do that.
No, but what's important to remember, if you wanted to move some excess money into the capital improvement plan, the big projects, you'd still have to get the appropriation from downtown. They would have to approve that, because that's not how that fund runs. So, in order to put those extra dollars in, we would have to get them to approve that and then be able to move that money. It's kind of like proffer money to some extent, is that we would just get them to approve it and then put it in the fund and then you can spend it. But saving it, it's, CAP is not really a savings.
No, no, no.
Or that it build up.
I'm not thinking about saving, but, you know, if, for some reason, you know, in the interest of transparency, we say, we have this much overage, you know, and I know that we don't want to take from locality and the big thing is raising taxes and everything.
Sure.
If we can help to offset that as a school division, I think that'd be more palatable to the constituents out there.
Right, right. So, essentially, what would happen, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Camery, is, say if the state said they, we have an overage of 1.5 million, okay? Then we would ask to either, A, use that money towards capital asset projects like we discussed, or B, to say, the 1.5 that you gave us, you can now hold on to that because we're going to use this additional 1.5 million dollars in replace of that. Because remember, we get two main funnels of dollars from locality and the state. So, then, that would be a good faith effort to say, all right, if you hold on to that money, if you don't mind holding that for the fourth high school, we would appreciate that, like a good faith type thing. So, as, at the end of the day, this school board has the authority to say how you want to spend that money, but then we have to ask downtown for how we want to spend that. But if, as a board, you want to say, look, we don't want to spend that money, we want in good faith to get to that point of the fourth high school, we would do the scenario that I just gave you. Because we're getting that money from the state, it's, what do we do with it now? Because the locality gave us money, so it's that offsetting.
That's exactly right. Definitely, we would look at giving the county money back, not state money.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Yeah, great question. So, back to the original question, again, it's up to the will of the board, but we don't, you do not have to hold a vote to wait to see where the state's going to land. We'll be in good shape with that. We'll just see when that overage comes, we'll re-present that to you whenever it comes in. Just wanted to clarify that. So, any other questions? Any other adjustments? Any other items you would like for me to prepare? Just to kind of give you a heads-up, what's going to happen on the 21st is I'll have a presentation very similar to this. I'll have a breakdown of the additional things that you all would like to see, and then you'll also have a resolution in front of you, because that is what you all will have to approve in regards to how those dollars are being spent. So, if there is any changes or adjustments, please let us know ahead of time so that we can prepare that, and then you all will vote on that on the 21st. Or you will be asked, excuse me, you will be asked to vote on that on the 21st. And with that, if you don't have any other questions, Mr. Chair, that's all my team and I have for you. Thank you.
Do we have any other board member comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A little bit of necromancy, beating a dead horse. I would like to propose that we add, and I know how most of, how all of you side on this, but I'm going to try to coerce you anyway. If we could add one more school to the CEP?
CIP.
Oh, CEB.
Community eligibility provision.
Yes, so that they would have free lunch and free breakfast to make it an even 10 instead of nine. And I was suggesting Bass Hoover as, I'd like to advocate for Bass Hoover as the school that we do that for. In my very preliminary research, that school seems to be the, in the most need with as far as students are concerned. So, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. We can discuss it, we can think about it. But as you know, I'm a huge advocate of this, this is sort of one of my pet projects. So, I, you know, I don't want to give up yet.
And I can understand where you're coming from on that, but as we discussed before, debt services covers that. You know, where no child in any of our schools will go hungry as it stands now, and they still get the same, same lunch. So, I wouldn't be voting for that, you know, to increase, you know, taxpayer revenue on something where we can, you know, take care of that for less than $200,000.
And also, also too, like, I know, you know where I stand on it as well. One thing that I would caution the board against is SB 283 is the bill that concerns the CEP, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jordan, but it's my understanding that Governor Youngkin convened a working group.
He did.
And they will report to the state their findings on November 4th, is it?
I believe that is correct. It is in November, I'm pretty sure the 4th is the correct day.
Okay, so, I was, where my head is, I was kind of of the mentality of if we needed to find a funding source to fund our other high prairie initiatives in this budget, then I was going to actually look at the nine CEP schools that are currently in place. That's where my head initially was, and I started looking towards SB 283. The last thing I would want to do, even if it saved us money, is to, what I would call in my own words, whip-sawing policy or procedures where students and parents are now confused. So, let's say that we did add Bass Hoover, and now we have 10, and then the working group comes back and says, yeah, this is going to be way too expensive, we may have to whip-saw that back out. Or conversely, if we did provide all 21, at all 21 facilities, CEP, if they decided to remove it or remove that provision, then that's another whip-saw of policy for constituents and for constituents being students and parents. So, I think we should kind of pump the brakes on that to see what SB 283 comes out with,